I didn't find anything with you.
I'd just like to know how to get this down. We just keep. Now. Same time for the. Well, almost. Any of you know. It's not a twenty four days. Okay. Yeah. No. No. Yeah. Very. I mean. Is it? I'm already some of them. And. Or some of that. I don't know. And they were. We don't ever. A lot. I mean. They're being. Yeah. Um, yeah. I love. I love. Uh, they're very well done. So. See. Sure. I don't think it comes. So. I don't. Yeah. No. I don't think. I guess. I think that's all. In Georgia. You know. Look. You can probably. That's. Maybe. I. He was. No. I didn't know. So. Now. Um, I don't know. She. Whereas I think it's. We are. We are. We are. We are. This. Too much. We can't handle. So. You know. We have to. I can think. For. What would be. Why? Especially. Because. So. I don't. Get back. Yeah. It's. It's. See. This is. What we're thinking. It's.
Uh, I'm McKee is here.
Yeah, I'll order the county council meeting for July twenty four. It's nine A M. Uh, Jim McKee is on. Zoom, though we will have to take a long call at least on. And then he knows what I would do. Uh, so we have minutes, so they'll want to have a copy. Read over your minutes from the June ten. Meeting and the June seventeen special meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? During that, is there a motion to approve them?
I make the motion.
Oh. Second? Yes. Dale? Okay. Uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Oh, hi. Hi. Jim?
McKee, I.
Okay, seven oh, thank you. Uh, reported collections submitted, uh, knowledge the reflections for the health department and the reporter for the month of May. Their motion to acknowledge those.
I make the motion.
So, second? I'm. Fine. Okay, vote Tom?
Hi, yes.
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 Yes. Jim?
McKee, I.
Thank you. Uh, review and acknowledge the treasures banker conciliation monthly comparison report for May and June of twenty twenty four. Is there a motion to acknowledge those two reports?
I make the motion.
Sorry Denise.
Denise made most valuable, say, outside.
We made.
Okay, uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And yeah, yes, and Jim?
McKee, I.
And seven oh. Uh, review and acknowledge the Clark Smith report for April of twenty twenty four. With a motion to approve that. And Jim, second?
Yes.
Dale? All of them favor Tom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
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 McKee, I.
Yes, I know. Here. Uh, we have transfers, um. What department are you at from?
Highway.
Okay, highway, uh, transfer from, um. Forty six dollar twenty two cents from great to do some complications. I don't know if you can approve that. Trans.
Uh, for. I'll second.
Denise, Ellen?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes, Jim?
McKee, I.
Yes, seven oh. Okay, uh, let's. Get department, yes. Basin? Wherever goes.
First, sure, yeah. I love the buttons, thanks. Okay. Um. Invitation to any council members who'd like to join the, uh. Precon meeting for our meeting crossings project on Streamtown will be Wednesday at the annex eleven, so. They might like to join. They come with my call. It's a precon meeting for meeting crossing project. With milestone, you guys saw it in. Wednesday at eleven. At the annex.
Governor, on the community crossing, we don't do that once a year. Is that correct?
Yes.
This next one that's coming up, we can apply.
We can't because we we applied for the whole one point five.
Okay. I'm glad I got an email from you today, so.
Yeah.
And then by the end of July.
We we just always went through the whole thing, so.
It's just. I thought that's all over the.
Um, one other thing, I've been getting a lot of phone calls about, uh. Dust control and oil shots. Um. I spoke to commissioners one last Monday about possibly looking into. Going back and starting. Oil shots again. Uh. Didn't know if you guys would be okay with me working into that. Uh, let's speak with attorney to somebody about, you know, how we'll do this off sharing. Completely on the homeowner. Uh, I've got some calls out about oil prices and things, so. To know if anybody would be opposed to me shooting that. But. But. Yeah, we found some some people that have the dust control aren't necessarily. Happy with it, how it's working, so. Uh. We've been getting a lot of. A lot of calls about. Was shots and other ways of things, so. Just think about it. And.
Anything else?
Yeah.
The other department hits back there.
Jenny's.
Oh Jenny. Health department.
Morning.
Hey.
So, um, with those preventative scans that we spoke about previously that hurt me a lot, we would like to, um. Do additional, we first requested a hundred, like request an additional two hundred. Um, it's fifty dollars, around fifty dollars a piece. Um, we'd like to take it out of the Viper fund, uh, vaccine payment reimbursement fund. Um, currently we have about seventy five that have gone through and we have some additional interest and then we're gonna, uh, load it at the fair. So we're we're looking to, um. Wonder an additional, put it on it.
Good. That that's her grant fund, right?
So that fund is what we were reimbursed for vaccines during COVID. So that was, um, and and that fund was approved, uh, Dr. Box. Um, and during that time it was said that, um, she, it was. Not not intended for like office supplies operating expenses, it was more for promoting, um. Moving help.
Um. Yeah, it's because I don't think we have any control over.
I didn't know. It was.
That we don't have to prove.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, okay, okay, that sounds good, okay?
Thanks Jenny.
Yeah, thank you. Right off there.
Great, great.
Uh, just checking to see if there's any questions, I know I've had a couple of those come through. If you guys have any questions, fine, I'm paying up also received the water report, I don't know that I poured it on you guys, I can't do that if you want. Shows what the testing in the wells for gas and water are. If you want. I said.
That would be great, and everything okay?
Yeah, uh, all right, going down. Uh, we've got one, well, that's going up, but. We know the problem, we still have to address that, it's been an ongoing problem, so. Work on that, but we wanted to get what I did complain about fixed first. That's what the bill was, was repairing the problems. So, got that done. Waiting for the grass to run out. We can start on the other project. We just saw that. The drainage inches blocked up and we got water set, and that water just goes into the light, so we gotta get it off of there. So we're gonna work on cleaning that up. I gotta be with Ryder and Daryl out there to come up with a plan to take it to, did it to drain the way. And so, but no. That's gonna be bad. The new cap to early act. So we're just trying to keep that.
Okay, send it to me, we.
Do it and send that report, have one report to me. Yeah, I'll send it to everybody.
Okay.
I'm gonna send it to you. Stop.
Thanks, Greg.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
I don't think they want to do, but. I'm contacting to a word. That I must hear.
Oh, morning.
Morning.
Morning. So. Um. We ran this by the commissioners the other day about maybe getting started on the security and we got the, you know, we have the walk through metal detector. And we talked to them about maybe, um, doing an awning. Uh, at the wheelchair ramp. And we got a price on that. Uh, I got a price on a. A X-ray machine versus for a bag scanner. And that's just something where you look at the judge, I talked to the judge about that. Um, she said that she could apply for a grant at the first year for the X-ray machine. And, uh, she thinks she she could cover that. Um, so really the only expense that we would have to get started with. Doing a little bit better at our security here is the cost of maybe the awning. Um. And I got, I got prices for you all. Um. The judge said that she had money that she could, that she could, uh. Have a desk, that we probably need a desk and also when she saw that she had money that she could cover that.
Also.
And you. But, okay, yeah, Jim, it's. It has. It didn't.
Melissa? You have twenty one eighty seven back there too?
Okay, great, thank you.
That doesn't have that picture on it, we, uh. Thank you. You're lucky to give us a quote, they didn't quote having anything on the front of that, uh, which you may put entrance on the front, that would make it a lot easier. People know, that's the door we want you to come through.
I'm like, I have to take the basketball.
As you can see in the scanners. That X-ray machine, that's actually, you know, pretty expensive.
Okay.
And that.
That's why we thought, we, I know you guys got a lot going on, that's why we thought maybe the judge, we just wait till the first of year and apply for the grant. Uh, at first of year. And. Having a question. You guys look over at it, it'll be less than time. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks Bill.
About that, Matt, go ahead. Go through the scanner.
That's what the machine would be for. That they would buy for the grant the first of the year. We already have that, we already have the metal detector you walk through, the X-ray machine would be for that. That forces.
That walkthroughs still work, I know we've had that for. Yeah. A lot of years, I know. Warren County brought it. I went. I went to McCumber County a couple of weeks ago and looked at what their setup was, that is the scanner that they have. I called the same company they had the X-ray machine. Um, the metal detector, our metal detector works exactly like theirs does, I I got it hooked up downstairs, uh, I tried it out with. I had you know walkthrough jury on and then, you know, it it would, you could set those lights and pick up a necklace or you can adjust it to the levels. It, when you walk through it, it lights up wherever you have metal on you, so it lets you know where you might. Wander, you know. Okay. But it it worked, it worked good.
Do we have ones too? Do you already have ones?
Uh, when we got that, I mean, yes.
Just for that trial? That you've been guarded for that trial?
No, yeah.
Oh, yes, yes.
It was. But it it doesn't, I mean, my government county, uh. Okay. No, it's, yeah, I mean, it's got a counter on it, they can't speak whether they walk through and everything. It's, it seems like it's pretty. I think it'd be a good. Good game to start with, I think, like something, I don't see it in all of them. Exactly. Right, thank you. Yeah, and then. And, yeah.
Um. Yeah.
So, um, I sent an email. It's definitely, um, just to kind of give you all a little bit. Information from back work, uh, in January of twenty three, I took over for area plant commission. I paid all the invoices and and took over the budget to help Holling and try to organize that. Um. In April, Roger turned in a bunch of invoices for a couple of years all kind of together. Um, the invoice fees have multiple different departments, so we kind of had to separate them now. I did request that he start breaking his channel and he did do that. Um, I noticed. A change in rate. On some of the different fees that he was charging. So I called a meeting with Jim McKee and Kyle, proud of the president of the area plant commission. To discuss it. And they requested that we brought it up in the area plant commission and during the meeting. And in April's meeting, they requested that Holling and I would sit down with Roger. And we discussed the changes on his. His contract, so he had a contract that I requested, they didn't match, so I brought up a question about overcharges. And some charges that he wasn't supposed to charge us and they bring a contract. So Holling and I, uh, got with him after one of the commissioners meeting, first part of May. And, uh, the commissioners came to me and told me that. It was okay, we needed to go ahead and pay him, that Roger just needed to update his contract and put in a clause that his fees could change. Um, purely. So, um, when I got the new contract, um, I just filed it and went ahead and paid everything. And then there was questions later on, uh. Obviously his pay months because we had to continue asking for money to the council. Uh, so we started going through those and that last contract that he. Wrote, they didn't backdate, it started May first of twenty. Twenty twenty three. So technically anything before May first of twenty twenty three should follow the previous contract fees. So the spreadsheet that I sent you, I know it was a little long because I had to separate the different departments out, wait in area plan. Um. And then I took anything that was charged before May first. By twenty twenty two, it was charged with the wrong rate and came up with an overcharge amount. Of nine thousand five hundred sixteen dollars and twenty five cents.
Is that the difference between one contract versus the other contract?
Yeah, so. These rates, the overcharges are based on the nine twenty twenty one contract. Which should be the old rates. And then anything after May first twenty twenty three obviously would be the new ones. Um. I did get a copy of both contracts and highlighted the differences. Um, the only.
Scott, she just gave you that this morning, I'll copy some of it, I'll give everybody tonight.
The only other difference I know noticed in the contract, it it was the exact same contract, it just changed changed the date. But he did take out some work which on page three. Uh, which pertains to. Um, the consultant for administrative expenses such as postage, photocopying, secretary of support, telephone calls. And et cetera, he agreed that he would not charge the county. So on that spreadsheet there are. That first column on the overcharges for printing. Um, one thousand seven hundred twenty five dollars in charges for printing copies. That shouldn't have. Chat with either, so with both of you men on certain thing, ninety five hundred dollars.
That's over job.
So I know, um, you've got a couple of different spreadsheets, along with grains, not going on that ice account. Someone's in the woods, you know, I was. Yeah, and you can see I separated out by category and subcategories, so you need to be departments that it was. The amount of, so not all those are area plants, some of them maybe highway. Um, plant bill. Um. Solidways. All of it. Highway department.
Yeah, I see you've got one highlighted here, this meeting, but it's not banned and so it's not being wired.
I, I, I'm not sure I questioned that one, a lot of them questioned Roger, I just pretty much. Paid whatever he's turned in after the meeting with the commissioners.
I noticed that too.
I. I don't know if that should have been something billed to the city of Attica, I don't know, but. There's been no discussion about Roger winning, they work with Brock Manning and they carry plans, so I don't know. I don't know what that charge is for.
And I, I don't see a kind of light here, but I know we asked about. Bill last month or.
Well, then Sweetkey or whatever.
Sweet, yeah, sweet.
Yeah.
So why would be things paying, I'm not here to.
Right.
Uh. Actually, they have, they've never applied for a permit.
Yeah. Uh, another charge is not on the overcharge, it's sheets, it's coming. Spreadsheet. Um, conversation that Holling and I had with Roger. After that commissioners meeting, he charged us four, four hundred, four hundred dollars for two hours to talk to me and calling. But she don't think this is about this. Yeah.
And that was in reference to his contract, correct?
So I just don't much know, you know. And I know that you're questioning some of the money, I know he's still got board quarter bill that's got to come in, I don't think it's coming any other month. Um. And I know we don't have any money. So I didn't know. You know, with the offset, you could probably move some money from. The lawyer fees to. Make up any differences between the overcharges. The one. The finished pain is third quarter bill, but it's first quarter bill, we do the first or the fourth quarter, the first quarter of next year, so.
Mm-hmm.
That budget should be that, or you can make those payment.
See, this is a question we had about increasing the fees to cover.
Yeah.
The solar costs that he incurs from his services. I know that.
Well, and you really need to throw half of that, I mean, solar is one cost, but then the zoning administration cost. Seventy five percent of that has been because of solar.
Right.
So, I mean.
Well, a lot of this.
Six of one.
That rewriting the law.
Right.
That's the biggest fault. Expenses for the area plant.
Right.
And there are some administrative duties that he's covering for. Looking at permits and things like that, but. Answering questions with phone calls, so there is some administrative. Parts that he's doing with. You know, that would be, I don't know, an engineer should be doing those, like I mean, it's administrative. Um.
I remember one meeting, I think. He's, Phil, doesn't he look at when someone was wanting to build and it's led to blame?
Yeah.
And I thought Tina said that they had. My. I'm not correct, that you had all that information in your office, that he really didn't even look at that, that you could.
Well, I am the blood administrator, so I did check it, but if he checks anything.
But why doesn't he check that, if. You're like, like.
I think there were few that were. Questionable that he wanted to look at.
That's right.
Um.
And you're all right with that?
Well, I'm not with it. If I see something that's in the blood, it was the on period. I don't hear a hill of that. It's it's in the blood value, we know the decision, which I, I can talk about having a. Then wrote up saying, yeah.
We got a lot of identity now, that it's my blood fringe. They had it motorized and they don't hold the counting harness, so. There's an issue, but it was actually the blood plane that contacted the E N R. But. I I think those were when Joe. That was there, um.
So when I have my bills now then.
I don't know that.
I haven't seen any recently.
Okay.
Um, Tina and I go through the process, some permits for now, I take it for immediately. She does that, but there are.
I know we discussed it in the meeting, but.
Yeah.
I didn't know any bills since that time of.
I think the only thing blood plane related with the bill after that was the incident down on forty one with an individual. Built without permit being down and it was in the blood fringe.
Well, I appreciate you. I know you put a lot of work into this, and appreciate you doing that, so we can look at it. But now. Do we have a. Sheet of what? Solar companies have reimbursed us for.
Oh, sorry, we've got that this period of power, and I think she's got it on here. What we got back from maybe.
Yeah, because all those, there's a pivot chart that not filed, I don't think you, where it breaks down all the solar. And then breaks it down by Ranger. You know.
The, um, the heading is, um, it'll say solar invoices.
Yeah.
But. Actually.
Yeah. And then I I think that pivot chart that I did. Um. Well, Kathy, you're, you're. Look at the charts, come this one. No, it's not, but there's, there's a kind of chart that says solar and it should break down Ranger. Yeah. Ranger, um, dolphin, Sweetkey. Um. Yeah.
That is all, it's big, big local. You know.
Two nine five.
And then banning engineering, which I don't know what that's for.
Yeah, is that include that four hundreds? Yeah. I would think it would be.
I don't know, it was. The original invoices doesn't have the copy of, I think it says, uh.
It's right there on top of your folder.
Banning engineering solar. Park.
And it's the last page, I mean, it was, I think it was the last page of the invoice you hear, so it would be three twenty five. Twenty four.
Three twenty.
Yeah, it should be in order of all the invoices.
Should be towards the end, maybe.
Wow.
Yeah, there's one above it too, right? Yeah.
There was one that was just brought in, I didn't throw that into, I mean, they were a month apart. I didn't throw it in a server, I wasn't sure. If it was probably related or not, so. But it was still banning engineering. But it could be essentially solar related, I don't know.
So when you're talking about developing, uh, subdivisions, I see. Three, three to one to three. There's like three or four there.
Yeah.
Toward the end, but what is that, what subdivision is?
Well, it's the subdivision, it's the subdivision ordinance that he's drafting. That he's preparing for the area time pressure for ordinance is. Or, yeah, they've got a subdivision ordinance that you like to. Put in place, so he broke down his charges on the ordinances that he was writing, so he was working on a subdivision. Some of the, some of them are detailed, some of them are, um.
Why, why is that banned? Uh, what do we have to see there? I banned it. But what is it?
And I don't know.
You got that same.
That's it, for for his, uh, it's just zoning, he doesn't list a specific.
He turned the charges to the area plant to pay. But I don't know what it was.
You got it.
I I would have, I said I would assume it would be something maybe charged to the city of Rock.
What he charged, area plant commission. Rob banning.
Where does it pertain to his project on? The lower road.
So this three twenty five, it just says preview banning engineering submit all for solar park. N O I.
So I don't know if that has something to do with the Attica development that he's doing. I mean, I know the solar is kind of close to all eleven thousand, but these and stuff is still. I don't know if the, if it was questions to do with that zoning related, I I don't know.
That's a lot of land studied last December. And we're getting charged for entering outlets, pushing the dollar toward.
Yeah, there were, um, I threw them at the solar, um. Harvest for them to reimburse, but concerns citizens, Paul Roger, asking about the solar charge, and she's still those. Um.
George, you for a public comment about the hand building back to you.
Well, I mean, he's spending time on the phone discussing solar things at the public. And he, he, I mean, he, he's a businessman, he's done a bill for his time. So.
But he's working, he's part of that planning commission.
He's only doing this right here.
Yeah.
Non moving member, I I looked that up the other day, he is on the.
Right.
Andrew, do we have an idea of what you pay Roger for your net?
I got it.
I need.
It's amazing.
I. I mean, I think the spreadsheet that I did. You know, I had to break it down by year because he was turning in bills that were previous years to, um. I think I got it on that spreadsheet. Um.
This first one is it, I mean, it's got twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four.
That's not the one I did, I'm not sure what that is, Kelly.
Which one, sorry, what?
I want the green.
Which, which one?
I just tell you.
Solar one or the big one?
Tell you this, based on ordinance, that's just dealing with writing the ordinances. That he's doing. Um, since he started, it's been seventy-one thousand dollars.
Seventy-one? Just on ordinance.
Just on order.
I I brought it up at the commissioners meeting last week, I had called Roger three weeks ago. Because some people voiced their concerns that he was still acting moratorium past. He was still meeting with some people to try and ram something through. And he told me, because I'd heard that about liberty or sweet pea. But he, he told me that right here and Dalton were the only two that he committed that any more applications for answer it.
Yeah, and that, that's why we're questioning why he's going after a sweet ride.
I read this, two ninety-five. So, use the date on that. It's in twenty-one.
Yeah, I mean, it could have been something to do with the zoning for. Those habits we've been in.
This is gonna be multiple invoices.
Well, I heard he was buying sort of solar and that.
Invoice number ten, let me set it.
So I should probably call him or Dalton them. Maybe, right there.
It was paid out.
Yeah, because that's the second.
This concerns me.
It's twenty-nine hundred for sweet pea.
For, it was invoiced out in twenty-one, paid in twenty-two. What is the story with sweet pea? I mean, if there's no permit. There's no application for permit, we should not be getting bills.
Well, aren't they the one we got the email on that I think they kind of thought they didn't need a permit because.
It's one.
Only on their ground.
Well, I I.
And then they were told, yes, they do, but.
There's some memorandums reported in the reporter's office for that company.
Yeah.
Cause uh, nothing come about or.
Yeah, that's the one I sent you.
Right, that's what I'm talking about, yeah.
I said. Have they applied for? It's only one family, their own ground, and they still have to give it for men or other ranches, yes.
I think there's two families.
Yeah, I think there, I think there is too. If, I think it may have started with one and then.
Like they were given a run, they should have. We should have built them, it's my.
Yes, I think, I believe the memorandums, I looked at it, it was like a two thousand acres of that area.
So anytime he has, anytime he has a uh, conversation with you, calling.
So these are the actual ones to go.
As I see it right here.
Do we know, um, just. Off the top of my head, do you know if they bid that out? That surveying ordinance administrator, zoning administrator, do they bid that out?
I put he just charges about an hour and what he. You know, based on the contract, but, yeah.
Well, I know we voted to deny the additional appropriation, so we. Get an explanation on this, and I mean, that would not have a, that expedition, so.
It's, as I say, are these the invoices that would explain, are some, are the invoices included in this that would explain that?
Yeah, that's why I did that, and I think you were.
Yeah.
Questioning what is on the invoices, so.
Well, I don't, I'm just setting that with Rod Bannon.
Yeah.
Because there's no explanation.
The one on the Rod Bannon had to do with. Petersburg solar park.
Oh, that, that, no, I. When I saw.
He has a board meeting with the, the board. So it's. Asking. I mean, it gets bored, it's me, and the only problem is. I can't. I can't be there, but I can ask somebody that naturally has.
And I can't be there, I got thrown.
You got any other questions you know, or might.
I'd like to have more time, you know, these numbers I got. I can read them.
I appreciate Kelly printing him off instead of just emailing him.
You know, I have a question on this bill, this, I just happened to glance down and I know who this gentleman is personally. He's from Tipute County. It says here on two twelve, twenty twenty-four, addressing this gentleman about a gun range issue. Yes. Lives right across the line. Two hundred dollars.
For an hour.
For an hour's worth of work.
Well, I I do know, I don't.
We don't have a gun range, do we?
There was an issue on the zoning, uh, there was a, there was a complaint, I don't know if it's. Same person, there was a complaint that somebody was using a piece of property for a shooting range. So there was questions that come about about the zoning.
It's my neighbor, I know who it is, yeah.
Um. And so there was a little bit of investigation into that, I know there were a couple of letters sent out from the lawyer. And myself, um. To figure out whether or not we think that on the line, but.
I guess I shouldn't say it's my neighbor, I don't know for sure, but I'm assuming that's probably who they're talking about.
Yeah, so I mean, anytime there's.
But that's not it, the thing is, that's not a Roger question. That's a law enforcement question.
He's, he's the zoning administrator.
Mm-hmm.
So anytime a question comes up about the zoning of a piece of property and what's. Can be done in that piece of property. Because he's the zoning administrator, he would take the lead on that. Uh.
Okay.
You know, typically that was following the like commissioners in most counties, if they don't have a zoning administrator. Um.
Who then might refer them to. The local sheriff's department, I would think.
Yeah, well, they have to deter, it actually goes legal, because they have to determine whether or not it's. Legal in that zoning area.
Okay. I just, I just happened to glance down, thought that was interesting.
He's wearing many hats. In a county. And, um. You know, that's what I'm saying, I know that you guys have questioned, or we've discussed about having somebody to take over the permits. In my mind, a zoning administrator, somebody, if you hired somebody in a county to actually be the zoning administrator. The permit should fall into that person's lap. Um. You know, to do the administrative.
Mm-hmm.
Um, same way as the county surveyor. Granted, I understand that doesn't mean that they have to be a surveyor. They can be the county surveyor without being that, they have to take classes. To be certified with, you know, certain classes. And the administrative stuff could fall on that person. Yes, you may have to get an engineer or a surveyor to do certain projects. But the county surveyor's role is to be the administrative part of the zoning, um. The surveyor department. And working with an engineer to do administrative stuff. And either way, you're gonna pay it, whether you're hiring an engineer or you have an administrator take it. But if you had a zoning administrator that was on the county and actual employee. I mean, that takes your, your permitting. Up, right? I mean, budget money to have somebody take care of the permitting, the minutes. You're already paying Roger to do administrative things.
I know.
Money to hire somebody part-time.
I know that there's been concern with citizens in the county that they don't like. Permitting. Things like that, they don't want to go down that road. But we are at a crossroads in this county where. There are things that are being done to my, to what I'm being told, that. They need a permit, or they need to have someone check into it, because maybe it isn't kosher of what they're doing for many reasons. So. I I don't know how you, how you go about, I mean, it's.
We need something.
Yeah.
But it needs to be smart, illogical. It needs to be simple. Um, as far as when people come in, they're upset about getting a permit. By throwing many things on zoning and purpose of zoning is to make sure that they follow the setbacks. And the setbacks are important because of the roadways and the highway department, I think they gotta do work. But they're not building a floodplain. So that's federal, maybe they're not building a floodplain, if they're building a house, they're getting the proper septic system.
Mm-hmm.
In my mind, the permits, those are the three main functions of getting the building for that.
Mm-hmm.
Is to assure that they're not breaking those. Guidelines. You know, I I got it, no one wants to, people want to do, but. If you keep it simple to those three things, people are pretty, they're a lot better than that, it doesn't bother us so much.
Well, looking at these sets of papers gives us. Black and white. Figures that we can see concrete. What the cost is. That the county occurs by contracting. You all know, we have talked about doing, hiring somebody, we've discussed that in a meeting. And. This kind of gives us a pros and cons picture. Either way. So, we appreciate that.
Yeah. Kind of. Questionable, though, when you have guy. Make a contract. And then. Change it. Kind of in the middle of the stream. And not, you know, back, I mean, it's, that's, that's not right.
No. What kind of?
And then, and then. Commissioners just saying.
Sure.
Well, they don't have anything, they re-will. How do you bring it up?
Well, I don't like the fact that, and I don't know for sure. That he has written his own contract.
Well, I mean.
I just, I just would. There needs to be input from the commissioner, it's a give and take, you kind of negotiate that contract out. And no, you don't. Redo a contract unless it's mutually agreed upon by both parties, that you're going to re. Redo that contract or make an amendment to. Midstream.
The attorney should.
Uh, I, yes, that is a legal and binding contract. You, you can't do that, in my opinion. But I appreciate, I appreciate you for doing this.
I have.
Put all this over.
I know, oh, really quick, what is Veritas?
I believe it's drilling.
Is it a drilling company? Veritas?
Uh, they're, they work with fire. So they're, they're a fire company.
Like boring or?
Do you know why we would use them? Just curious.
We don't personally use it, so, uh. The contractor, very, very contractor for, uh, podcasts.
So they probably have to come to him to make sure.
There are tons that we.
Yeah. Like, and there's been a lot of.
Charter, uh, because there, so speaking of this. Charter is about the only ones that will send us. Links. Of where they're likely to be putting the fire and it's working. And they said those directly to Roger and I, I'll be. They were human set of notions. Therefore, if there's an issue, there is one.
Okay, we just wondered, it was in here quite a bit, so we were just curious.
For the highway, the problem you have.
But, uh, there's some, some, okay, the fire please, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
When, when do you receive permits? I mean, it seems like to me, your office receive information on this, and they are.
Well, originally it was in the auditor's office, and then. Person that was doing the permits took another job. And we moved it to the auditor's or assessor's office. It kind of made sense, because I, we work with the parcels anyway. Um. Even though I'm not filling that role, our office is still taking the permits, so I am the first contact. Assessor's office is the first contact with the permits. I still collected my send in to Roger, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other departments, anybody else? Any public comments?
I'll put you back on what she said, I have a few questions, um, about the ready to go grant funds, the. One point five nine that was granted to downtown county, is that the right number?
Yes.
Um, so, uh, I know that, so I received an email from Rod Bannon, actually, it was to me. You know, um, Mark Russ, but I, I'm here for Petersburg, because he's wanting to put in a five hundred thousand dollar app. For a light elimination for the downtown, because we did not want the housing in the apartments at this point, the downtown was the priority, so, um. He's wanting to use Petersburg sewer match, which is three million plus. Um, for a public match for the light elimination, but we're only getting five hundred thousand for Petersburg specifically, which I mean is greater. I mean, we're not, we, I'm working with a structural engineer right now to get those. Figures and things together so that we're ready for that, but I wanted to question why, um, that money was. Where the rest of that four point five million went, and I also was wanting to make sure that he. Is going to ask and use our public match, that he would like to ask for more money, because I don't know that he has a public match to match the funding that he had asked for the previous. Two point O grant, so I'm just coming to. Check boxes and make sure that everything is in line, because if we, I don't, I mean, this is a state-led program, so I don't know that it would hurt us, but. For federal grant matching. Public matches, you can't apply for anything else with that public match, if we take a twelve million grant. For the sewer project and as a public match, and we put that up with ready grant funds. That makes it to where we could possibly not use that public match in future. Grants, I know it's not an issue with Okra, I checked with them and I'm still scrambling to figure out the rest of it, but I wanted to bring it to your attention, because. I don't know where the money's gone, I don't know where the money is, and I don't know anything else about it, that's all.
I think Brad can answer.
He has, yeah.
The four and a half million was what, um, downtown was awarded, every county in Graylock, you know, pretty good. White, Harold, Ben, and Bell, Warren, the government, and Tipton, were all awarded four point five million. Um, it was going to be eight hundred thousand for a housing project in Covington. One point seven million for a housing project in Adderley. And then two millions for a branch project downtown Adderley. The Wigan project, the market, so. Then he had switched, um. I had requested four hundred fifty thousand for our wastewater treatment plant, our short call there. And so he switched at his, um. Seven hundred and fifty thousand from ready one and gave it to Covington Sewer Treatment Plant. And then took, um. The seven, the four hundred and fifty thousand and switched it to Addison, so Addison ended up with one point seven billion. I've got it right in my head. So then we presumed we had to have a public match for the project. And a one-to-one match. And I was going to use the money from Covington for our wastewater treatment plant. Which was going to be ready two, but little amount, three doesn't get, so I was gonna use that match for our. Which was gonna be ready to, but little amounts, we didn't get, so I was gonna use that match for our project. It would also match Attica's, uh. Housing project. So. I, I called Rod and asked you, you know, how, how we were gonna do this now. Since he switched the wastewater project to Ready One money. And they said we didn't use the Ready One money for Ready Two, so now Attica doesn't have a, a match. And we don't have a match for ours. Then the, the one he put, the Petersburg one in, and two hundred and fifty thousand for. Uh, Hillsborough was in the Lilian Downman. Um. But Lilian Downman put in two hundred and fifty million. And we're going to get part of that too. So. He put that in, then, then when he had to have the. That money's gonna be more readily available to spend. He put in that, that Ready Two money. The Lilian Downman is, he switched his from, from Ready Two. And he's asking for four point six million in Lilian Downman.
You've lost me, Brad.
We have no. No, county has no.
Control.
Control over any of that ready money.
Goes through Wigan.
It goes through Wigan.
Yeah.
Because it's not a match. It's not a county match, so we have no control over it, now, I, I will agree with you. And I, I don't know if you feel this way, but. I don't like the fact that he has designated his own project for part of this money when there are other places in this county that need it. Far worse.
Equally.
Yes.
Equally.
Yes.
So I. As well, the question I got on who called about half an hour the other day in Indianapolis, wonder why Petersburg wasn't getting any distribution. Of that money, and Covington was giving a switch on the, the sewer project, now I see that's changed, Brad. So anyway, that was my kinda hung with you. So anyway, that was my question, we didn't receive, Petersburg didn't receive. Kind of money. That was equally distributed, and they wanted for downtown infrastructure. Rod Bannon did not come to the board for asking their opinion, he came to the board and said, this is what we're going to do. What they wanna do is could turn downtown, go and get some other things, correct?
Correct.
And that's where we are, and that's why they want equal money, Brad.
I will tell you, why they switched, why he switched at his. Uh, Ready One money to Covington is because we are starting our project, we're ready to spend it.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Petersburg was not ready to spend it. Because they don't have the quotes together, and Kim knows that, Kim just started on Petersburg, she's doing, trying to do what she can. Rodden hires him and then he let her go.
I understand that, I understand.
So, Kim, that was my question to Brad, I knew that to be, you know, I know, I know all that over. But my point is, and I never just said, is there's a lot of money out there. He put one point seven million into Attica. You know, and another two hundred million, no, two million, sit down, down. You know, kinda like people that have a little bit.
But you, but you, but still, like, Brad said, you gotta be ready for it, you gotta have stuff ready for them, they weren't. They weren't ready, I mean, Petersburg, Hillsborough weren't, they're kind of in the planning stage, but they weren't ready.
That he went, while he was planning for Petersburg, he went for the, the apartments and not what the town wanted, he didn't even ask them what they wanted. Didn't even ask what the priorities were, he wasn't asking what they wanted, he just did what he wanted, so my question is. Do we have to let him use that public match, or is just that, I mean, is it up and gone?
Yeah, who says who can use what public?
That was the other thing that I thought, a question about match, you know, what are we gonna do, cause you switched my project to Ready One. So, on wastewater treatment. So on the match, he said, well, Petersburg's doing a twelve million dollar wastewater project. Maybe we can use that, but he didn't mention it when he talked to the town, town board, the town council president. In Petersburg, he didn't mention Covington, right, he didn't, in Petersburg, he didn't mention. That he needed that for the match for Covington and Attica for their housing project.
Now, Brad, have they award, has IEDC awarded those yet?
No, they haven't.
So it's.
Cause they, they.
Subject to change.
Side of projects. Yeah, it's a little different in Ready Two.
Right.
And Brad, another thing, you know, I showed already programs, which you were, Attica was, Petersburg, he counted that sanitation project. They'd already had that invisible before Rod Bannon showed up.
Yeah, and, but, but it, it can be.
And but he counted it, it counted, that's not fair.
Yeah.
The, the one thing that he said was he talked to the players of some of this. Apartment stuff and housing, you know, I don't think he said he did as much with the. Government part of it, but, and he just, he told me he just hit a brick wall.
Well, I think the Attica building project south of. Town, Brad, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think they have stalled that for a time being.
Well, for, for right now, till, till it sees if it gets picked. And, and then you did, you know, I've talked with Jeff Curtis about Emerson Steel, they own the grant. And we're trying to get that together, I'm trying to help him out, I'm gonna try and help him too, because Petersburg needs help.
And we're scrambling to get ready, I mean, I'm, I've got a structural engineer that's giving us a report on what, what would need to be done. And we're, I'm getting the quotes and, and things like that, so I mean, we're, we're scrambling, so we're not actually ready for the money now, my main concern is that. If he's gonna use Petersburg's project as a public match, will that eliminate us further in the future? When we are ready to use that public match, and do we have to give that over to him, does, can he use that, like, that seems, that's my concern.
My feeling is they should use it.
He, he switched on the two million dollars, four point six, and, and with the Lilian, so. Uh, unless he's driving for six point six, he may be driving for six point six, otherwise. If him got ready, they could put their project. Possibly in or.
And I, I submitted a project into the portal, but it, well, like, I didn't have the quotes or anything, I mean, that's the part that I'm still trying to finish right now, so.
Hang on to it, don't give it up.
And I suggest contacting members of the Wigan Board. Yeah. Talk to everyone of them.
Well, I, I, I tried to contact our representative, but I never get a phone call back, and so it's a conflict of interest at this point because. I was hired on and I was fired and let go, um, because I was asking questions, and I was told, my other concern is that I was told. That everyone's on a need-to-know basis, and that is including the elected officials, and I was told that by Rod. That's my concern.
Well, and see, I, I went out to the Wigan meeting. When they were gonna discuss how to just. To do the other, or maybe, and I was asked to leave that it was a private meeting, I have been told. Since that meeting that they decided they are gonna open it up, so it's definitely, I don't know, is that correct?
I don't know that this one.
Oh.
Now, I. I will say that. I, I will say that comments from the public is. It seems pretty brazen and bold for him to ask a public elected official. To leave a meeting when he's under contract with the county, that's the first thing, the second thing was, he was told. By an elected official, not this body, not the commissioners, but an elected official that. He needs to be conducting those meetings in public because he represents this county.
So, Nick, we've heard some of the questions, I just, I just wanna make sure that we don't get ourselves in a situation where we don't. We're not able to go after the funding that we need later on because. I have, you won't answer my phone calls either.
Thank you, Kim. Do we know when his contract is due to expire?
Twenty twenty-four is lost.
But we have to negotiate a year ahead, right?
Well, he's.
But I thought last year we.
And then it's in his contract, but for a second, I'm like, after a year, he still gets paid, uh, written, and he's. Eliminated after a year within his contract, he still gets paid for another year.
That's.
We have to get a year notice, yeah.
But. We funded it through the end of this year, if it's not funded, the contract's void, so. And we've had that discussion before.
We're happy to share the project in the public match, and that's not an issue, it's just, it, it, it's. Not equal to our need, and, and, and it shouldn't, you know, if that's the money that the town invests, they should be able to, to use that money.
Kim says she would, they would share it for housing for Covington and Attica. But. You know, they wanna use some for their project, you know, and, and not have it, you know. Used to other places.
Kim, have you talked to anybody from IEDC to see if there's some way that. Something can be done for you guys through this?
I would, I'm a person, I wanna, I, I know I don't wanna make any assumptions, I wanna be impactful with my word and make sure I'm. Getting the right information before I go and ask questions that I really don't know a lot about.
Right.
And, and I believe it's Wigan. Goes to the IEDC and says, this is what we want to spend the money, and they approve, so, you know.
And Brad.
Wigan Board has the power.
Brad's right, in the same way he says try to get it, cause you're trying to get it, you're not. It's not.
It's not guaranteed.
Yeah.
No, but you're right, we.
I haven't done the meeting in ten, I gotta go.
Thanks, Brad.
Hey, is Aaron still here? Do you have anything for us, Aaron?
No, really?
We'll see you tonight at a joint meeting.
Okay.
If you're just. Listening to all of the ideas.
Uh, did I hear correct that you're bringing the pizza tonight?
I am. Uh, I know, well, I'm just saying, um, planning mission. The income of last weekend, pretty, pretty well know this, but it does state. That the goal for the county is, it says, I don't know if you've ever read that, it's released in February. That, uh, courthouse in Time, Iowa County Garage, so, they'll say anything about the annex. So. That is a talking point, I'm not listed in IP, well aware of what the plan was coming since February, so. I'm not gonna waste a lot of time, I don't think we need to have a plan, but that's, I'm just here to listen.
Yeah.
While you're here, we, I was given an invoice from Baker Tilly. Says for professional time related to preparing various bonding scenarios. Participating on conference calls and attending meetings. And. I don't know who signed the contract for this, um.
That, this report, cause this was bond, I mean, that's what.
Well, we, we paid forty, forty-five thousand for the financial business. To fund the courthouse renovation, the highway garage, and for all the bonding, which. I don't know, I, I don't recall, that's actually for that.
I was told. I was told that they, Baker and Tilly had been contacted to come in and explain to us how we could go forward. With paying for all three projects to get done at the same time.
That, I think that's, that's.
But nobody in this body of elected officials made that statement.
And on who participated in a conference.
It's this, yeah, yeah.
It's not me, yeah, and not me, and the meeting, I have been getting. So, um. You know, Colin asked about dating out of council, was it, and I, I said no, I was not. But we had an explanation that who ordered this, and who participated in, in this, in Baker Tilly. Okay, I just want you aware and make sure you're all right, but, yeah, I'm. I wanted to. Uh, bring it up if you'd like.
Bring it up, we need to get this thing set.
Sure. So, so you, you've had conversations with, uh. Brenda. I mean, one-on-one with lawyers, I mean, can you elaborate how those went, or?
Well, I, I sent you an email, exactly, the only thing we talked about, yes, on the email, that's, it was a. Twenty-five minute meeting, we, we met in, in Taylor's office, Brenda and I, and. Taylor and, uh.
That's why, that's why Facebook said, well.
Yes, I did, yeah, yeah, I'm with you about. Yeah, so I'm facing, we got them. So that's. Uh, I mean, and I, I told you what we talked about, Brenda still wants to go to the corner, I said. I wanna go to the corner, and that, um. Had our discussion with her, and we were prepared to, to, to litigation, we have to look in, oh, Brenda, that's. Um, litigation gonna cost a lot of money, we need to sit down again and have a joint meeting and, and. Cause she thinks that, um. That, uh. The public wants, wants it, and. Elected officials want it, and so I said, well, let's have a joint meeting, and she gave me. We saw the four of us sit down, we agreed on Monday or Tuesday night. And I believe all four of us said, we were free both of those nights, well then, everyone here told me. Tuesday night worked the best, so I sent the email out to everyone that. Tuesday night worked, and Brenda came back and said she can, she had a meeting to get out of, so. She wanted her today, I said, no, I want a meeting at nine o'clock, so we went with Monday night.
My question for her this evening is, why are you so adamant? To define. The council. And continue on with this project and create more. Billing and expense that we are not in favor of paying. I, I wanna, I want an answer, like, what are you, what are you thinking?
So, and then, and that was the end of me, that's all we discussed, was having a joint meeting, and Kent. Uh, then Taylor said, you know, would be costly in litigation, work it out. So hopefully tonight we can work it out and not have to go to litigation, but, uh.
But Taylor, who was being litigation, who would be there? Who would be involved in that, it would be the lawyers.
I mean, it could be both bodies, it could be envoy, anybody associated with envoy.
Okay.
I mean, and. Like Dudley said, like I would tell you, you know, nobody wants to go to litigation, you don't wanna go to litigation, you might think you, you don't. Commissioners don't wanna go, envoy certainly doesn't, right, we want. Entities that wanna come here and, you know, help us out when we need them, envoy wants municipalities to want to use them. Uh. So, and, yeah, that was like, like Dudley said, that was basically a meeting with. Things are obviously not great, especially public perception, how do we kinda try and work more cohesively, so. Uh, set up a joint meeting, try to do that.
Any public comments? I, I know, uh. Colin's gotten here a resolution, twenty twenty-four dash twelve, and we tabled the Paws and Claws, um. I think they said. I let her out explaining things, but still, twenty percent increase from last year, and. Covington does, right, and the Vatican, Dave's Rome, and.
We just forgot, we saw the kid. He said the other day, it was a cat problem, he says, we have Paws and Claws, so there.
So.
So basically, we're taking care of everybody in the country.
Yes, and have the forty percent in reserve.
Well, that's, that's, that's not right, because I had. A taxpayer come to me and say they had a cat. Was in Hillsborough that was. Um. Roaming around, they called Paws and Claws because they worried about it, they said they like cats, and, and they were, they, they said that. They didn't cover Hillsborough. So that's, that's exactly what that, and I'm, I'm, I'm not very happy with Paws and Claws now.
Well, uh, unless I hear something differently, I said.
I mean, that's, that's bull, because, like you said, we. We pay pretty good freight for that.
Yes.
At one time, I thought they, that nine thousand was to build cages for cats. I don't know if that was one-time fee or not.
No, this, this signed out, they can't see. No, this, this signed out, the contract, seeing when we budgeted, we don't know what in August. We don't know what the contract is gonna be to the twenty four. So we budgeted the same amount that the twenty three contract was. And, um, it was. And thirty five thousand.
It's actually based off of twenty twenty twos instead of twenty twenty three.
Plus then. They raised it seven thousand from thirty five thousand to forty two thousand, seven thousand dollar increase. So that's why they need more money because, uh, management's signed contract.
Forty two.
Forty two instead of in three back to thirty five, and we backed to thirty three. That's why we tabled it.
Is there a way, Taylor, to cap? The contract amount?
I mean, theoretically, I've seen the contract. Being like within the contract or?
Now, when you do a contract, you know, it's not gonna go, I mean, we can't continue sustaining and, and. What'd you say, a twenty percent, twenty percent increase every year?
Yeah, yeah, like I said, I, I don't have the contract for it. I don't know that I've seen it, but, um. Certainly, theoretically, whatever it ends or whenever it says, hey, you can terminate it with this much notice. Sure, you could, if it's not in there, you could put it in. And I think that's kind of similar to what was done with envoy, right? Envoy, it said, hey, it should be about this much then. Everybody said, well, how about we cap it as much?
I mean, it's not our job to do contracts, but yeah, I'd say keep it the way it is.
Jason, who picks up their animals in the county? Was it deer, whatever? Unfortunately, we do.
It was on State Highway, State Highway.
I mean, we, we take their most of our, where we don't go into people's yards and they, we have. A few people ask, can someone move the way you're on? And we, we don't do that. So, so long as I'm a road.
With that letter from Taylor. About overtime and do you want him to go ahead and send that out or?
We have it. I've been reading it and it looks good to me. Um, Kim's on vacation, so.
Okay, so it's in the works to go out Monday. Okay, Doug.
Okay, so the next thing is.
And then my only other question, like, we had the joint meeting in June, but only Aaron came to. But we had other things on the agenda, like the inner local agreement for Warren County, but that's not on the agenda tonight. I didn't know if that. It's just dead in the water. We, that was kind of tabled too, cause we didn't agree to that yet, right? To pay that. So it's. Yeah. So I think, Emma, we need to either have them talk to him some more or renegotiate or decide to pay it or something, I think.
Aaron, have you heard anything from the other two commissioners? Okay.
And, and I sent all the email and I had the, the talk with, uh.
Ethan, Ethan.
He understood and said, I look at it and I thought, who put that bargain here? Yeah, and he would like it. He doesn't, and he doesn't like the July first or June thirty yet.
I agree with that. It's hard for them too.
Steve's okay with going back to the old way, one third, two thirds.
I think that just works better in our situation.
That's right.
We tried that. We know it doesn't work, so. Right.
No, I thought it would be here, but I mean, we told us last month that overtime was getting under control.
Yeah, we just keep being told that they've got a, they're hiring or they've got enough people that the schedules are gonna work out more. So there won't be as much overtime, but then every month it's the same or worse report.
It seems like once we started this, this is, it created a monster. And I don't know how you rectify that without.
I think we tried to fix their pay, so they were being treated fairly, but. It seems some of them are taking advantage of that. And that's, that frustrates me, cause that wasn't. The intent. I mean, we're trying to be good and fair, but not allow for.
You said. Three hundred sixty three thousand and overtime, so July twelfth.
Yeah, do that, woman, and next five months. Okay, so tonight, since our budget hearings. Um, what I'd like for the August twelfth, August twentieth and September ninth. Those to be the budgets. That's September seventeenth, maybe kind of like that, we. For our discussion that.
Go over everything.
Go over everything. Before we go down like that, so. Well, I. Would place on schedule any hearings on seventeen, right, you know.
And that's all day, isn't it? No, that's an evening.
That's the evening.
Yes, sorry.
Seventeenth and will.
Is there any all day meetings?
No.
Okay. And then October ninth will be the final hearing date?
October fourteen, fourteen.
Yeah, cause, no, it's Tuesday and it's thirteenth of holiday and.
And that's Tuesday. It's okay, it's Monday.
Anything else?
Yeah, Dudley.
Go ahead.
I will be, I haven't done it because it's still announced out, so.
Yeah, Jim, do you have a question?
Yeah, yeah, I wanna make sure we're taking no action on Rogers invoices and we're taking no action on paws and claws. Is that correct?
That, that is correct. We're gonna, you know, we've got the printout on, on the Roger invoices, but.
Yes.
Hunk them all. And, uh, if you wanna discuss them tonight, you can discuss them tonight. I, I. Fine.
No, I, I, I just wanna make sure what I heard over, uh, the Zoom, uh, video, uh, audio. So, yeah.
Jim, I can drop off your paperwork on my way home if you want.
Well, I'm not, I'm not for sure where I'm gonna be here. So I'll pick it up tonight. I, I, I'll be, I'll be at the meetings tonight and I'll, uh. I'll get it from you tonight then, Kelly. So, yeah.
Okay, okay. We got one more thing on here. One on my, Jim, um. So a commissary report from the sheriff's department. And she, uh, I'll email that to you.
Yep.
Um, yesterday, uh, it covers January one through June thirtieth. Uh, balance is a hundred and seven thousand five hundred forty nine dollars ninety three cents. Is there a motion to acknowledge that?
I make the motion.
And second.
Before we did, well, I did a little bit of ninety thousand dollar. On that commissary order, so how much money do you really have?
Uh, they have a hundred and seven thousand five forty nine ninety three.
On that commissary, we're probably just looking.
So it's. Oh, we, we don't have a second, do we? Oh, yeah, we have a second. Okay. So, uh, we'll roll, roll, roll. Jim, I'll let you go first.
Hi.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, anything else? Nice meeting. Any other comments?
We'll be in the courthouse or be at the courtroom.
On stairs. Hopefully it's gonna be set up. Brad's working on it. Okay. Uh, there was a concern.
Hi.
All those favor.
Hi, hi.
Yes.
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 Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I was doing those spreadsheets. I was looking at all that stuff.